Hello and welcome. We're back for another round, an hour to dive into the Word, a journey in the Word of God and Sacred Scripture. So I just want to thank you for joining us. I hope you've enjoyed our journey thus far. Hope and pray it's been fruitful. It's always good. It's always a blessing to marinate in the Word of God. So welcome back. I hope you all are doing well. Again, I hope you are making the most of these wild times. And I hope and pray that in the midst of the struggles, the challenges, the storms, an opportunity to cling more closely to Christ. And hopefully too, it's an opportunity for maybe some unique blessings. With my family, one thing I love is board games. One of those guys. So who knows, maybe this time has been an opportunity to bust out some board games and play some good ones or order a new one perhaps. So the kids and I, my wife, we played a rousing game of Ticket to Ride last night, Europe style. And I was shocked and appalled to lose. It was Felicity and Dominic's first time to play and they beat me. So I am scandalized at my loss. But it's probably good for me it needed. So anyways, I hope you are doing well. And yeah, again, thank you for coming. Welcome back and let's do this thing. Let's dive on in. We're gonna continue reading from our friend Cardinal Winn Van Tuan. And today's reflection, he starts kind of a new chapter, if you will, in his little book that we're reading from. And the new theme is discerning between God and God's works. And so he reflects, "When I was a student in Rome, someone told me, 'Your greatest quality is being dynamic. Your greatest defect is being aggressive.' In any case, I was very active. I was a scout, a chaplain for a youth group. There was something that pushed me forward each day, to run against the clock as it were. Because I had to do everything possible to strengthen and build up the church in my diocese of Natron before the hard times came under communist rule. So I worked to increase the number of major seminarians from forty-two to one hundred and forty-seven in eight years, of minor seminarians from two-hundred to five-hundred, and four seminaries. I worked for the ongoing formation of priests in six dioceses of the Metropolitan Church of Hugh. I developed and intensified the formation of new youth movements, lay movements, of pastoral councils. I greatly loved my first diocese of Natron. And then after eight years, I had to leave everything and go immediately to Saigon, according to the direction of Pope Paul VI. I had no opportunity to say goodbye to all those who reunited with me in the same ideal, the same determination, the same sharing of trials as well as joys. That night, when I recorded my final greeting to dioceses, it was the first time in eight years that I cried, and I cried bitterly. Then there came my tribulations in Saigon, my arrest. I was taken back to my first diocese in Natron, placed in the harshest form of captivity, near my former residence. Morning and evening in the darkness of my cell, I could hear the bells of the cathedral ringing, and it tore at my heart. At night, I could hear the waves of the sea from my cell. And then I was moved again, traveling the whole of the ship, with fifteen-hundred prisoners. I was taken to the re-education camp of Vinh Phong, in the mountains, lived amidst other sad and alien prisoners. Above all, I suffered the long tribulation of nine years in solitary confinement, seeing only two guards every day, enduring mental torture, absolute emptiness, no work to do. I didn't walk back and forth from my cramped cell from morning to night, since I'd become crippled by arthritis. I was on the brink of insanity. Many times I was tempted, tormented by the fact that I was forty-eight years old, in the prime of my life. I'd worked as bishop for eight years. I'd acquired a great deal of pastoral experience. And there I was, isolated, inactive, and separated from my people by seventeen-hundred kilometers. One night I heard a voice encouraging me from the depth of my heart, 'Why do you torment yourself so? You must learn to distinguish between God and the works of God. Everything you've done and desire to continue doing, the formation of seminarians, men and women religious, laity, youth, pastoral visits, constructing schools, for years for students, missions for evangelization of non-Christians, all of these are excellent. They're God's works, but they're not God. God wants you to leave all these works, place them in God's hands immediately, and have confidence in Him. God will accomplish things infinitely better than you. He will entrust His work to others who are much more capable than you. You've chosen God alone, not His works." Powerful stuff. Let's pray. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord God, we thank you for the gift and the witness of Cardinal Winn Van Tuan and just his reflection of surrender, his reflection on the gift and the beauty that is God's works, but not to mistake it for God. And the challenge it is sometimes to have the work of God be interrupted. I think in some way, maybe not quite so dramatic, but we can all relate, right? Corona, the virus has disrupted our lives. We had a rhythm, a routine, a flow, and it changed. And maybe it left projects unfinished. And we had to let go of certain things, and things weren't what we wanted them to be, or what we envisioned them to be. And so just heeding the words of Cardinal Winn Van Tuan, we prayed that if nothing else, it could be an opportunity to place your works in your hands and to choose you even above the good works. It's good, but you alone are God. And so just in a special way, God, we turn to you, we surrender all things to you and your will. And we love you. We love you, God. You are our King and our God. Bless us this day, bless and guide this study. We pray that it could bear fruit in our lives. We ask these things in your holy name, intercession of Mama Mary. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. All right, let's dig on in. So we left off last week in chapter, we finished chapter ten, okay? And so last week was so good, right? What a dynamic climax to the adventure. And so today's kind of the conclusion, okay? There's still some good stuff there, but we went through the valley, we defeated the demon, right? We found our beloved and we partied for fourteen days. So we still have a few unanswered questions, but yeah, we, last week was so good. And so now we kind of wrap up the story today with the return and the resolution of things with Tobit, between Tobit and his son Tobias, with Tobit and God, with Tobit's earlier prayer for death, his loss of eyesight. So let's read on, let's finish this beautiful story. Chapter eleven, verse one. "After this, Tobias went on his way praising God, because he had made his journey a success. And he blessed Ragwell and his wife Edna." So just briefly, but again, that idea of Thanksgiving, right? Of something, we talked about essentially every class, but I think the strength of Tobit's witness and the impression he's left on Tobias. And so the good man that Tobias is, and obviously Tobias has a free will of choice, but rooted and grounded in the witness of his father. And so this Thanksgiving and praise, right? This recognition of God as the giver of every good and perfect gift. So I love that. And then the reciprocal blessing, we talked about that last week, with Ragwell and Edna blessing him as well, and then him returning that blessing. Reading on, "So he continued on his way until he came to Nineveh. Then Raphael said to Tobias, 'Are you not aware, brother, of how you left your father? Let us run ahead of your wife and prepare the house, and take the gall of the fish with you.' So they went their way, and the dog went along behind them." There's that dog again, we mentioned a couple of classes ago. Verse five. "Now Anna sat looking intently down the road for her son, and she caught sight of him coming and said to his father, 'Behold, your son is coming, and so is the man who went with him.'" And so, ah, the beautiful image, right? An image we looked at earlier. But just the mother on the lookout, right? The mother's love for her son. And just those beautiful words, right? It reminds us of childbirth, right? Those words, when your child emerges into the world, right? Behold your son, right? You think of our Lord's words on the cross to our Lady, behold your son, right? And so those beautiful words, right? As they see their son coming home, right? And just that, ah, like a, mm, like almost an image, like a beatific vision, right? Obviously Tobias' wife is not over, but like to this point, like he's run the race. Like he's completing the journey and he's coming home, right? And that surrender the parents had to have and then like his return. Verse seven. "Raphael said to Tobias, before they approached his father, 'I know that his eyes will be opened. Smear the gall of the fish on his eyes, and the medicine will cause the white films to fall away, and your father will regain his sight and see the light.' Then Anna ran to meet him and embraced her son, said to him, 'I have seen you, my child. Now I'm ready to die,' and she wept. Tobit got up and came stumbling out through the courtyard door. But his son ran to him, with the gall of the fish in his hand and holding him firmly. He blew into his eyes, saying, 'Take courage, father.' With this, he applied the medicine on his eyes. Next, with both his hands, he peeled off the white films from the corners of his eyes. And then he saw his son and embraced him, and he wept and said, 'Here, I see my son, the light of my eyes.' Then he said, 'Blessed be God, and blessed be his holy name. Blessed be all his holy angels. May his holy name be blessed throughout all the ages. Though he afflicted me, he's had mercy on me. Now I see my son, Tobias.'" Right? Such rich and stirring words, right? Such a powerful scene, right? The embrace, the embrace of his father, the return of sight. And I love that line, something so deep and profound. "Here I see my son, the light of my eyes." Ah, I love it. Oh, I love it. I love it. I love it. The, I love the image of the sun, right? Blue on his eyes, right? He takes the gall, rubs it on him and breathes on it. And so just, you know, a powerful, you know, Christological image, a type of Christ. And so just, yeah, I love that image of breath. I've been talking a lot about that with my, at school at John Paul II. And it's just like, I don't know, there's just something so beautiful about that, right? From, you know, Genesis two, right? God breathing on the dust of the ground, and then you have the creation of man, the living soul. You know, you have the vision of Ezekiel in that valley of dry bones, they're dry, right? And God tells Ezekiel to breathe on them, right? To prophesy that the breath of God could come upon them, right? You think of Jesus appearing to the apostles after resurrection and breathing on them. And just that gift of the Holy Spirit, that gift of breath which brings us back to life. So just a rich image and just a, you know, a powerful image within the context of Sacred Scripture. From darkness to light. The first thing he sees is his son. You know, I think of, it reminds me a lot of Zachariah in Luke's Gospel, chapter one, right? He, him and his wife, Elizabeth, long for a child, right? And he's lighting incense in the temple, right? This special honor. And then he encounters God, he encounters an angel, he's gonna have his son, his son's gonna go with the spirit and the power of Elijah, right? And then he struggles and so he's, with belief, and so he struck mute, right? And so for, I love reflecting on that, right? You just got the best news of your entire life, and at least audibly, you can tell no one, right? And for him, there's no Twitter, so he can't delete it, no social media. And so, ah, I wanna tell the world, and I literally can't tell anyone, right? And so you have this nine months of silence, right? And then it's only, it's only in the gift of his son, and then his name is John, that he can then speak. And then you have this beautiful, rousing, cannibal Zachariah, right? And so many ways that I see it is the fruit of those nine months of silence, right? And so I imagine, you know, it's, in life, it's so easy to get caught up in like even good news, right? Like the, gotta tell everyone about it, everyone's talking about it, and like, like all of that. And so because he's, because he can't talk about, like, he's removed. And so I think there's a peace there and there's an opportunity to like, to go deeper, you know? And so like, and so like, he can't talk it out loud, so I imagine him talking it out with God. He's like, "All right, God, like what does this mean?" Like Elijah, the prophet that called down fire from heaven, you know, to go to prepare the way for the Lord's anointing, what? It's like talking to God, you know? And then all of a sudden, his son is born and he says his name is John, and he can speak, and you have the cannibal Zachariah. And so just that, like, I don't know, it's like so beautiful, and in a similar way, right? You know, the journey of Tobit, his prayer, his prayer for death. And then, yeah, the loss of eyesight, and with that, like, I give up, take me home, God. And then, you know, that journey in the dark, and to the point of even having to let go of his son in that physical tangible way, he takes that journey, and then the return of his son and the return of his sight. You know, and with that, the scales coming off, and he sees the sun, right? And I think, you know, who knows, but like, go back to his earlier prayer, you know? And I think, I think something he might say now is like, like, "Life is worth living. I have a son. If nothing else, I have a son." Like, "Life is a gift and a blessing," you know? And so like, in that journey in the dark and then the light, and seeing his son, and just, ah, like, right? And so he just, he can't help but just giving all praise and glory to God. Blessed be God, blessed be his holy name, blessed be all his holy angels, blessed be holy name, be blessed through all the angels, right? Just like, almost like this falling down and worship and adoration, "Who am I?" Like, "You are God." Yeah, echoes of Job, the end of Job. In verse fifteen, "Though he afflicted me, he's had mercy on me. Now I see my son, Tobias." I love it. I love it. I love it, right? And I think, you know, something for all of us, you know? Suffering's hard. It's just it. Suffering's not fun. Suffering's painful. I don't like it, right? You know, but fruit can come from suffering. Our God is, our God is the conqueror of death. Our God took the suffering, the pain of the cross, and made it the means of our redemption and salvation, you know? And so in our own lives, like, sometimes we're invited into that same mystery. We're invited into Christ, right? I mean, isn't that what we proclaim in our baptism? We die with Christ and we rise, we, "Hallelujah, you've been baptized, you've put on Christ." Right? We were anointed with oil, we become little Christ, Benjamin Christ, right? Benjamin the Anointed One, right? And so with that, right, putting on Christ, right? We long for the beatific vision, but sometimes our journey is, yeah, that journey of suffering, you know? But again, that's our God, like our God can bring beautiful fruit from that, you know? And so I think, I don't wanna speak for Tobit, but like, like, he's a different man. Having suffered the loss of eyesight, right? And then we, and then his son's homecoming, and then seeing his son, right? He sees, and it's not just that physical sight, but it's that deeper sight, like of like, like, God is God, like, life is rough and tumble and hard and painful, but God is good and life is worth living and there's, like, it's a gift, it's a blessing, it's a grace. And so I think that's a message that we like literally need to hear a million times, and then after a million times, we need to hear it from another one more time, you know? Because suffering's hard and it's painful, and it's a lesson I don't wanna learn. I'd rather learn a lesson of like, what to do when I have too much money, how not to be greedy. Like, "Give me that lesson, God, but not the lesson where I suffer." Like, "Why that one again?" But yeah, our God is good. And so again, you know, I think this is something that we as Christians and Catholics, this is something unique that we have to offer the world. Our world does not have an answer to suffering other than death and escape, right? And yet you see it in its most extreme forms with euthanasia and abortion, right? But even in lesser ways, the ways we choose to escape from our suffering and to numb it in its different forms that we might take. And so like, is that our only solution, right? And so what we have to offer as Catholics and Christians is the witness of Jesus Christ. He who knew no sin took on the sins of the world, right? Who suffered the scourging and the carrying of the cross and the crucifixion, and made that the means of our salvation. And He wants to bring about that same victory in our own lives. And that's something we have to offer the world. That there's more to suffering than death, than escape, right? There's an opportunity to be more closely united to Christ, right? To walk with Him, to unite with Him. And there's something beautiful about that. And so I think, yeah, the story of Tobit in part is a story to that truth, right? Here's a man who suffered greatly, right? And yet, even in the midst and in and through the suffering, right? Our God is God, like life is a gift, right? You know, the sun rises, you know? And like, obviously this miraculous ending is beautiful and like, like, sure, we would like that in our own lives, and sometimes we quite literally experience it, but like ultimately, that sunrise, that last miracle is in heaven itself, right? And like, that's the theological virtue of hope, right? Is that we have a heavenly gaze, which is hard. Like, there's a lot of things in the world that are like, drawing me down, you know? But in and through it all, to that reminder, like that we're, we have an eternal home, we have an eternal destiny. And as dark as the night might be. Let's read on, verse sixteen. "And his son went in rejoicing, and he reported to his father the great things that had happened to him in Media. Then Tobit went out to meet his daughter-in-law, the gate of Nineveh, rejoicing and praising God. Those who saw him as he went were amazed because he could see. And Tobit gave thanks before them, that God had been merciful to him. When Tobit came near to Sarah, his daughter-in-law, he blessed her, saying, 'Welcome, daughter. Blessed is God who has brought you to us. Blessed are your father and your mother.' So there was rejoicing among all his brethren in Nineveh. And Ahikar and his nephew Nadab came. And Tobias' marriage was celebrated for seven days with great festivity." So a couple of things there, again, these are themes that we've already talked about, but one is, earlier we had a fourteen-day wedding feast, right? And he gets home, seven more days. I love that, like, ah, the gift of marriage, right? We talked about that at length, but it's a gift, it's something worth celebrating, gosh darn it. The two becoming one flesh, this new vocation, this new opportunity to become an icon of the Trinity, this epic endeavor, right? And so this is good, right? This is a good. And then again, this idea of blessing, what does Tobit do? He blesses his daughter-in-law. I love that, right? And we talked about this at length, but like, we could do far worse in the world than, you know, if we took nothing else in the book of Tobit, if we just blessed people, right? If we called on God's blessing for them, right? We know, like, that we communicate that, like, "I love you, you are good. I delight in you, you're a gift, you're a blessing, right? May God bless you," right? We call down God's blessing, like, that would, we could use a little bit of that in the world today. Again, just another witness to that. Good, let's read on, verse twelve. Chapter twelve, verse one. "Tobit then called his son Tobias and said to him, 'My son, see to the wages of the man who went with you, and he must also be given more.' He replied, 'Father, it would do me no harm to give him half what I've brought back. For he's led me back to you safely, cured my wife, obtained the money from me, and has healed you.' The old man said, 'He deserves it.' So he called the angel and said to him, 'Take for your wages half of all that you two have brought back, and farewell.' Then the angel called the two of them privately and said to them, 'Praise God and give thanks to him, exalt him and give thanks to him in the presence of all the living for what he has done for you. It is good to praise God and exalt his name, worthily declaring the works of God, and a fitting honor to acknowledge him. Do not be slow to give him thanks. It's good to guard the secret of the king, but gloriously to reveal the works of God, and with fitting honor to acknowledge him. Do good, and evil will not overtake you. Prayer is good, when accompanied by fasting, almsgiving, and righteousness. And little with righteousness is better than much with wrongdoing. It's better to give alms than the treasure of gold. For almsgiving delivers from death and will purge away every sin. Those who perform deeds of charity and of righteousness will have fullness of life. Those who commit sin are the enemies of their own lives.'" Okay, so we have this testimony of Raphael to them. So I think, obviously beautiful, a lot we could talk about there. Maybe you should pull out a couple of things. I love his affirmation of them, like, you know, halfway through verse six. "It is good to praise God and to exalt his name, worthily declaring the works of God, and with fitting honor acknowledge him. Do not be slow to give him thanks," right? I think that's something that we saw here in these last few chapters, is this spontaneous Thanksgiving for blessings, right? And so like, that's important. And again, it's simple, it's obvious, but it's important. And so just to cultivate that, to cultivate that habit, that spirit of praise and Thanksgiving to God. And to see the gift, to see the blessing, right? You know, it's, sometimes we take that for granted, and then, you know, a worldwide pandemic hits, and then we're like, "Oh, yes." All these gifts, I took for granted, right? The gift, the gift of seeing people's mouths as they talk. I think I took that for granted. The gift of not having to smell my breath for hours on end while I wear while I wear a mask, right? So forth and so on. And so just yeah, the gifts of God, right? And so it's it's good to give thanks and praise to God, to exalt his name, right? We have much to be thankful for, right? I can't, I don't know about you, but I did not cause my own existence. That would be wild, if that didn't happen, right? I had no part in that. Right? And it's a big, why am I saying that? Because, because everything's a gift, right? Everything's a gift, it's all, it's all grace, right? Everything. God, God gave me life, right? He gave me my soul. I had nothing to do with that. And so everything's gift. And so like, ah, like, there's, there's much to be to be thankful for, to give God praise and glory for. So I love that. Do not be slow to give thanks, right? Think of a Western movie, right? We need to have that itchy trigger finger, right? Where we're like, oh, can't wait to can't wait to give thanks to God, right? Oh, right now. Maybe that's just me. Alright. Moving on, verse seven, I like it, it's kind of poetic, it's kind of yeah, it's good, it's almost like a proverb, right? Or something from the Lysandland. "It's good to guard the secret of a king, but gloriously to reveal the works of God." I love that, right? Our God is God, our God is King, right? And so like, sure, like if you need to keep a secret for the King, do it. But God's goodness, his grace, his gift, his blessing, yeah, that's not a secret. That's something that the King wants like he wants you heralding, right? Like that's, it's not a secret, like, like no, like tell the world, right? It's good news, like we've gotta be banging down the doors. Do you know the good news? Right? Gloriously to reveal the works of God, with fitting honor to acknowledge him, right? I love it, I love it, I love it, right? What are the Gospels? The Gospels are good news, right? So if there's anything we should be telling people, right? Let's tell them some good news. Right? That's the Gospels. There's this epic quote, which I'm gonna paraphrase, from J R R Tolkien. He is the writer of Fantasy of the Lord, the Rings, and the Hobbit, which there's some movies that came out recently. But anyways, not sure if you're familiar with it, but yeah, he's considered a, yeah. One of the greats of British literature. Anyways, he has this quote, and he says this. He said, and again, I'm paraphrasing, but he says this, "There's no story ever written that man wishes was more true than the Gospels." There's no story ever written that man wishes was more true than the Gospels. And what's the kicker? They're true. And like, that's such a rich and deep and profound yeah, like a quote and thought, right? Like it demands a little bit of reflection, right? It's like, I don't know, go on a field trip to the library, right? And you lock the doors, you can only pick one book. And whatever book you choose, when you walk out the doors, that then becomes reality. Right? In essence, Tolkien's saying, out of the entire library, you would only walk out with one book every single time. The Gospels. Cause it's the best news. And the crazy thing is, it's true. Right? Ah, it's epic, it's such a good quote, such a profound thing, right? And it's something that we lose sight of, we miss, but like, gosh darn it, it's good news! And so Raphael's saying, guess what? It's not a secret, right? Quit living that way, right? Like, and that's part of the scandal of Christianity, of Catholicism. Is if we, if we actually believe what we say we believe, we might wanna tell somebody about it. Like there's a problem if you know the greatest news and you tell no one, right? It's like earlier we talked about Zechariah, like he's gonna have a son, right? What does he wanna do? Right? He wants to tell the world, right? We need to tell the world, right? Our world today is at times suffering from a lack of good news. Right? And the biggest part of that suffering is the good news of Jesus Christ. Right? That they have a Father in heaven who loves them, that delights in them, right? That wills their existence, that has a plan and purpose for their life, right? That there's hope, that our God conquered death. That suffering can be, it was transformed to be the means of our salvation, like talk about some good news, right? And so how desperately our world needs to hear that, right? It's good to keep the secret of a king. But this isn't one of them, right? Tell the world! So anyways, I don't know, it speaks deeply to me, right? When's the last time we've told anyone the good news of Jesus Christ, right? Have we, have we told anyone in an elevator recently? Have we told anyone on a, we don't ride the bus here locally probably, but you had the idea, right? At the water cooler at work, have we told, have we told it to our our fantasy football league chat? And again, I mean, like, the answer's not in a hokey fake way, but like like if I haven't, if it's been a year since I told anyone, hey, Jesus is awesome, like, that might be a problem! Anyways, we gotta move on, but like, yeah, yeah, I think again, a takeaway from this is, like there's good news to be, to be shared, you know? Especially today, our world's crying out for good news. Let's be a bearer of that. Reading on, verse eleven. "I will now declare the whole truth to you, and I will not conceal anything from you. I have said it is good to guard the secret of a king, but glorious to reveal the works of God. And so when you and your daughter-in-law Sarah prayed, I brought a reminder of your prayer before the Holy One. And when you buried the dead, I was likewise present with you. When you did not hesitate to rise and leave your dinner in order to go and lay out the day, I was sent to test you. So now God sent me to heal you and your daughter-in-law Sarah. I am Raphael, one of the seven holy angels who presents the prayers of the saints and enter into the presence of the glory of the Lord. They were both alarmed, and they fell upon their faces, for they were afraid. But he said to them, 'Do not be afraid. You'll be safe, but praise God forever. For I did not come as a favor on my part, but by the will of our God. Therefore, praise him forever. All these days I merely appeared to you, and you did not eat or drink, but you were seeing a vision. Now bless the Lord upon the earth and give thanks to God, from ascending to him who sent me. Write in a book everything that's happened to you.' Then they stood up, but they saw him no more. So they confessed the great and wonderful works of God, and acknowledged that the angel of the Lord had appeared to them." Okay, so again, so beautiful, like man, especially if you're hearing the book of Tobit for the first time, like what an epic book, and like, so frustrating that we ignorance this book. But anyways, yeah, I love this, I love this part, a couple of things here. One is the, again, this idea that God is God, right? God is at work in our lives. Right? And so in the moment, we, we, sometimes we just can't see it. Alright, and that's because God is God and I'm not, right? When the bird poops in our eyes and we become blind, right? What are we gonna ask ourselves? Why, God, why? In your infinite wisdom, why? Right? And so there's, we can all relate, we have moments like this. And then, you know, it's like this, right? In time, right, we can look back and we can see God's presence, right? We can see God working to bring about things for our good. And that's, and like, it's hard, but like I think that there's a gift in this moment when we can look back and be like, oh, okay. Okay. Would I, again, would I have, I appreciate, I have a profound new joy for my son and the gift of sight. However, I would have loved to learn that lesson without the pooping eyes, but you know, that's not what I, but like, I can still see, I can see God at work, right? Bringing about things for good, right? Could I see that then, or then or then? No. But like, at least more so than ever before, at least in partial, like can I see that now? Well, yeah. For me, it's that imitation to trust, like I can relate to this in my own life, right? I feel somewhat guilty and that I haven't suffered much, I've richly blessed life, okay? But, but, but the little sufferings I have experienced, right? Not in the moment, but in time, and sometimes it took years. I feel like in a similar way is what Raphael shares with him, I feel like, you know, I can look back and be like, oh. So that's okay. Like God was at work, he was, he was, there was suffering, there was pain, there was frustration, there was confusion and loss, but like, but now I can see, I can see God's hand in it. And so like, it's a call to that greater trust and greater surrender, which is easier said than done, but like gosh darn it, like in my past, like, like it's happened, like God's worked things for my good. Like good has come from amidst all of that. And so that's, I don't know, that's I believe that, I believe it, cause I, I mean, like that resonates with me with the words of Raphael. Cause I've lived it, I've experienced it, and not just once, but multiple times. And so, and so I think it's a call for each of us, right? A lot of times we have different seasons of life, and if we're in the season of the bird pooping in our eyes and blindness, like if that's our season, okay? It's our call to trust, that God's working all things for good. You know, it's not my will for the moment. But God is God, right? And he can bring about good from this. And so it's a call to faithfulness and it's a call to trust. And so you know, so that gift of hindsight. You know, over the years in these studies, for those of you that come regularly, I've shared a number of these different little stories. But just, I guess, just to share one to illustrate that point, you know? The, you know, one moment of great suffering in my life, wasn't that bad. But like in the moment, oh, I suffer, right? But it was like my middle school years, late middle school or high school of of trying to be what I thought I was supposed to be as a Catholic, as a Christian, and like and worldly suffering for it. Not gaining friends and influencing people, right? And obviously, there's other, there's other things going on, but like, just a lack of of authentic friendships and I just, and respect camaraderie and just kind of isolation and like obviously, there's a variety of factors, but part of that I felt like was precisely because of like trying my Catholic identity. And so that was horrible, like, cause what little middle school kid doesn't want good friends? What, who doesn't want friends that will, you know, love and accept them for who they are? Alright, so the suffering, but then fast forward and I look back and it's like what a blessing! Like it was, it was such a gift, it was such a blessing. Why? It's because it, I think it saved me from even greater stupidity and poor choices later on, cause it kind of demanded from little Benjamin to to seek out and search the truth. What do I believe and why do I believe it? Right? It's not enough to believe things just because my mom and dad said me so, they carry weight. I trust them, but like what do I believe and why do I believe it? Cause I'm suffering, I don't like suffering, so I'm not gonna suffer if it's a lie. And so what is, is it true? And so like, and so it, and like if it's true, like am I, is it something that's like that I'm willing to stand alone for? And that's, which was a hard lesson to learn and I no way exhibited for every limb, made plenty of poor choices, but like the fruit of that was like coming out of that, like I came to know that God is real, like I believed in God, I encountered God, I fall in love with God. And like I desired to make God the Lord of my life. And I desired to live that regardless of if that meant friends or or no friends, you know, like, like that was the fruit and like, like could I have learned that lesson to that degree, to that depth? You know, without undergoing that fire, if that makes sense, you know? And so because of that, like what that then, like what that brought about in college, right? If I didn't have, like if I didn't know who I was and whose I was, right? Going into college, like what might college have been, you know? The pain of learning that lesson, poor choices, et cetera. So anyways, hopefully I didn't go too long of a tangent there, but like, that's just one of like, I can tell you, you know, five stories off the top of my head of like of moments of pain and suffering, but yet moments of like, no, like in hindsight, like like God working it for my good, you know? And to where like, I feel like in honesty and sincerity, I could say praise God for that, like yeah, I just, like there was a strength I received, like through the storm from that, that I wouldn't have gained otherwise. And so again, yeah, so that resonates me with me and it's a reminder that in life, right, in the storm, in the pain, in the suffering, I don't always know why, but I know there's God. I know that God is good, I know that God works things for his good. And so I can trust in him and I can surrender to him, I can lay that at his feet. Right? And so I know that's true. But it's something else to live it, right? But intellectually, I'm convicted of that, just as Raphael proclaimed to them. Let's read on. Verse, chapter thirteen, verse one. "Then Tobit wrote a prayer rejoicing and said, 'Blessed is God who lives forever. Blessed is his kingdom, for he afflicts and he shows mercy. He leads down to Hades and brings up again. And there is no one who can escape his hand, acknowledging before the nations of sons of Israel. For he has scattered us among them. Make his greatness known there, and exalt him in the presence of all the living. Because he is our Lord and God, he is our Father forever. He will afflict us for our iniquities, and again, he will show mercy. He will gather us from all nations, among whom have been scattered. If you turn to him with all your heart, with all your soul, to do what is true before him, then he will turn to you and will not hide his face from you. But see what he will do with you. Give thanks to him with your full voice. Praise the Lord of righteousness, exalt the King of the ages. I give him thanks in the land of my captivity. I show his power and majesty to a nation of sinners. Turn back, you sinners, and do right before him. Who knows if he will accept you and have mercy on you? I exalt my God, my soul exalts the King of Heaven. We rejoice in his majesty. Bless the Lord, all you his chosen ones. All of you, praise his glory. Celebrate days of joy and give thanks to God. O Jerusalem, the holy city, he will afflict you for the deeds of your sons. But again, he will show mercy to the sons of the righteous. Give thanks worthily to the Lord. Praise the King of the Ages. That his tent may be raised for you again with joy. May he cheer those within you who are May he cheer those within you who are captives; love those within you who are distressed. To all generations forever. Many nations will come from afar to the name of the Lord God, bearing gifts in their hands, gifts for the King of Heaven. Generations of generations will give you joyful praise. Cursed are all who hate you; blessed forever will be all who love you. Rejoice and be glad for the sons of the righteous, for they will be gathered together, will praise the Lord of the righteous. How blessed are those who love you! They will rejoice in your peace; blessed are those who grieve over all your afflictions, for they will rejoice for you upon seeing all your glory. They will be made glad forever. Let my soul praise God, the great King, for Jerusalem be built with sapphires and emeralds, her walls with precious stones, her towers and battlements with pure gold. The streets of Jerusalem be paved with beryl and ruby and stones of over. All her lanes will cry hallelujah and will give praise, saying, blessed is God, who has exalted you forever." Woo, right? Hmm, so good. So, uh, the beautiful, beautiful, just this, this prayer, this exaltation of, of Tobit, right? It's, ah, just, hmm, spews forth, just this, this praise of God, right? He takes the, it takes the heart, Raphael's admonition, right? That, that call to, to, to not be slow to give thanks to God. And so that, that, just that rounding, robust praise and thanksgiving to God. Very quickly, a couple of things that stick out. One is the, uh, you know, as you read that, and like, we don't have time to look at it in detail, but just, like, you can't help but hear the words of the gospel just ringing out in that. Um, and so, you know, in so many ways prophetic. You know, we, we could do a whole study of, of this chapter in, in light of Jesus's Sermon on the Mount. Particularly the Beatitudes, right? And so like, he gets it, like he, um, he, he's experienced it and, 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 uh, and, and so he, he's, he's there to, to, to pretestify to the truthfulness of what Christ proclaims in the Beatitudes. Right? So there's something so good about that. Also in the Gospels, you know, the, uh, you know, the, the verse six, "If you turn to him with all your heart, with all your soul, to do what is true before him, then he will turn to you and not hide his face from you." Right? And so just the, ah, the words of the gospel, ask, seek, search, knock, right? What father would hand his son a snake when he asks for a loaf of bread, right? A scorpion would ask for a loaf of fish, right? How much more so my heavenly Father, right? And, and, and so that, that admonition, right? To, to, ah, to see God with all your heart. Uh, uh, I, I love that line where he says, um, yes, verse six, it's a long one, but in the middle of it, right? "I, I give him thanks in the land of my captivity." Right? And so there's, there's something beautiful about Tobit's witness. Like, yes, he's regained his eyesight, but lest we forget, his, the north is conquered and destroyed. He's living in exile and he's living his faith in isolation, right? And yet even from the midst of this, he's like, God is freaking awesome. And the world needs to know that God is King and he's Lord and he's amazing. Right? And so like, ah, like the, the, the witness of that, and I think that's, yeah, it's something so beautiful, right? That, 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 you know, again, we, we have something that, that nothing else in this world can, has offered, nothing else in the world can satisfy. Right? That, that we can praise God in the midst of the storm, like the witness and testimony of the saints, right? Men and women who've gone before us have experienced some of the worst that life has to offer, and yet in the midst of the belly of the beast, right? They're, they're like, they can, they can revel in the glory of God, right? The peace that surpasses understanding. Wild, right? So good, so beautiful, that, with the strength that witness. And then especially there at the end of the chapter, just to this, this, almost like this, 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 this anticipation of the beatific vision. Right? That, that, this idea, right, that it'll, it'll be, um, right? That they're, they're gonna, it's gonna be forever, right? To all generations forever, they're gonna come from afar, generations of generations. They'll be gathered together, they're gonna give praise, right? And then it's, it's almost like a, a preview of the, of Saint John's vision of heaven in the, in the Book of Revelation. And so just a, yeah, a rich and beautiful chapter, right? Uh, at its heart, just, just, this heartfelt thanksgiving to God. I think a, a preview of the, of the Beatitudes, and, and so many other teachings of Christ in the Gospels and this, ultimately this, this, this yearning for heaven, right? And then like that, that, like he has that, that, uh, he has, it almost is this beatific vision moment, right? In, in this moment, like, the, the clouds have lifted, right? The, the scales fall off, right? He sees his sons, it's, it's this new life, you got Raphael, the revealing how God's been working in and through all of this and it's, and it's just like, right? Ah, right? And that, 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 that foretaste of the beatific vision. So good, so good. All right, let's, let's finish off chapter 14. "Here Tobit ended his words of praise. He was fifty-eight years old when he lost his sight, and after eight years he regained it. He gave alms, he continued to fear the Lord God and to praise him. When he grew very old, he called his sons and grandsons and said to my son, 'Take your sons; behold, I have grown old and am about to depart this life. Go to Media, my son, for I fully believe what Jonah the prophet said about Nineveh, they will be overthrown. But in Media there will be peace for a time. Our brethren will be scattered over the earth from the good land, and Jerusalem will be desolate, the house of God, and it will be burned down, and will be ruined for a time. But God will again have mercy on them and bring them back into their land, and they will rebuild the house of God, though not be like the former one, until the times of the age are completed. After this, they will return from the places of their captivity, will rebuild Jerusalem in splendor, and the house of God will be rebuilt. There is a glorious building for all generations forever, just as the prophet said of it. Then all the Gentiles will return to fear the Lord God, and truth will bury their idols. All the Gentiles will praise the Lord, his people will give thanks to God, and the Lord will exalt his people. And all who love the Lord God in truth and righteousness will rejoice, showing mercy to our brethren. So now, my son, leave Nineveh, because what the prophet Jonah said will surely happen. But keep the law and the commandments, and be merciful and just, so may it be well with you. Bury me properly, and your mother with me; do not live in Nineveh any longer. See, my son, what Nadab did to Achar, who had reared him, how he brought him from the light into darkness, and with what he repaid him. But Achar was saved, and the other received repayment, as he himself went down into the darkness. Achar gave alms and escaped the death trap, which Nadab had set for him, but Nadab fell into the trap and perished. So now, my children, consider what alms giving accomplishes, and how righteousness delivers. And he said this, he died in his bed. He was a hundred and fifty-eight years old, and Tobias gave him a magnificent funeral. When Anna died, her burial, he buried her with his father. Then Tobias returned with his wife and his sons to Ekbatana, to Aguelo's father-in-law. He grew old with honor, he gave his father-in-law, mother-in-law magnificent funerals. He inherited their property, and that of his father Tobit. He died in Ekbatana, Media, at the age of a hundred and twenty-seven years. Before he died, he heard of the destruction of Nineveh, which Nebuchadnezzar and Asserus had captured. Before his death, he rejoiced over Nineveh." So a lot that could be said there on that last chapter and, uh, but we're, we're running out of time and I wanna, I wanna, we need to conclude Tobit, so we can move on to the, the next book at our next class. But, um, so again, a lot could be said, a lot, a lot of prophetic elements. But I, I think the last thing I kinda wanna just conclude with and wrap up with is, is just this idea of, thank God, God didn't answer their prayers. Right? Rewind a couple of chapters, right? Lest we forget what happened in chapter three. Tobit said, "Dear God, take me now." Later in chapter three, Sarah said, "Dear God, take me now. Dear God, if you be so kind, please kill me." Please, please, right? And guess what? God didn't answer their prayers with a yes. And as we conclude the book, thank God, God didn't answer their prayers. And so I, I love, I love that. And I, 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 I love the fact that like, it was something we, we've talked about, but like, like, as, as dark as things might seem, right? Who knows what the future holds, right? And so our, our hope and our trust is in God, right? It's not in this world, you know? And so that, like, we, we, you just don't know. And so the, the, we, we, we've gotta be a hope-filled people, we've gotta be an Easter people. Hallelujah has to be our song, right? And, um, and be careful what you pray for. And thank, thank God for, for, for prayers which God answers with a no, right? How, how good God is, how merciful he is, uh, sometimes in, in the, with, with those answers. So let's, 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 speaking of prayer, let's close in prayer. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we give you, uh, thanks and praise for this day. Thank you for the, the beautiful and rich gift of Tobit. So powerful, um, so many beautiful themes, so many beautiful, um, things to reflect on, and so timeless and timely for, for this moment. And so we, we turn to you in prayer, um, you who know what we desire, you who know what we need, you know, you who know our hearts. And so we, we, we turn to you and just, ah, we ask for your grace and strength, especially amidst the storm, amidst the, the whirlwind. Uh, we pray that, that if, if, if nothing else, uh, in that struggle, in the trial, that we could plant our roots more deeply in you. Sometimes we have, we have little to no control over the, what's going on, but, but we can, if nothing else, cling ever more closely to you. We thank you for the witness of Tobit, um, and his wife, the gift of, of Tobias, the gift of Sarah, Sarah's, Sarah's parents, and just the, the collective witness, um, and then the, the gift of that journey. Um, and we, we pray to God for, for our journey. And we, we place that, that, that road that lies ahead in your hands. And we just, we just say, "Jesus, I trust in you." So yes, these things in your holy name, amen. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hope you all have a beautiful and blessed day. Quick look at next week, we're turning the page and we're starting a new story, right? You think Tobit was good, Judith is so good, especially if you've never heard it. Love it, both these books. And if, uh, in, in some ways, I think they're, 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 I, I love to look at them together, cause there's some, there's some interesting parallels. So terribly excited for the Book of Judith. And so, yeah, stay tuned, uh, next week. And please continue to, to share the word. Yeah, the, who, who knows if, you know, I think there's a lot of people that maybe could hear the message of Tobit in this, uh, in this moment in their lives. And so it's gonna be an avenue for them to, to dive into the story. So, uh, feel free to share the videos and thanks for joining, God bless.